Dr. Aragornian to arrive and then we'll get started. So we'll do 6:05, we'll begin. That is correct. Thank you. Oh, Char is traveling. Okay.
Oh, I remember that one.
Can we get rid of that? Which is traumatizing. What is happening?
No, 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 email.
Email does not do this.
And you were like, let's talk. That was my idea. Um, when I was traveling. Or came to my service and I was like, it's normally one of that. Right. And like, do basically whatever the equivalent score is, but. It's just what I do. It's because I never watch the news. I only ever listen to stuff. When. It's so, um, but I was like, well, I could watch it. Yep, yep, yep. Oh, my husband.
Okay, we are going to get started. Um, so calling the meeting of the Board of Education Thursday, June 22nd, 2023 to order. We'll begin with our political regions real quick. Please stand. Please hand over your card. Ready, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose name, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. We'll move to our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral and ceded territory of the Chumash Tongva, Fernando Dano, Tavium, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. Ms. Ramirez Adams, can you please take the role?
Member Tabit. Member Ponzer Kamka.
Present.
Dr. Aragornian. Vice President Weisberg.
Present.
President Brison.
Present. Thank you very much. All right. So we do, Ms. Tabit, I've learned just now is traveling, so she is not going to be here tonight. But we do have enough board members to continue and the number needed is three. So we have three. We will move forward. Dr. Aragornian, I understand, is in transit. So with that, um, we will move to the agenda, the rest of our agenda. I do want to say, um, we, uh, just there was an error in prepping the agenda, so we just need to make, uh, one change in particular. And that is to add, if we look at item number two, which is request to address the board, uh, add an additional period of public comment to A, basically a new two A. So that will be public communications on open session items. Um, so during our typical meeting. And then we will move to item two B and renumber it all the way down to basically the new two D. Public communications on closed session agenda items and moving on from there. Any objections these?
I, I don't have any objections. I just wanted to bring up, um, I think this is for exact committee, but I, I understand the, um, and I'm happy about when we switch, uh, public comment periods. I think it was back during COVID times in order to give people an opportunity, but I think at this point, I'd like to, to return back to the traditional format of having our first public, not tonight, but at our next meeting. Our first public comment period being agenda items only and our second comment period being for general items. Um, I think that allows us to get back to the business of the meeting and, um, while I understand why the change happened, I think it's time that we move back to it. So just wanted to bring that up. Um, for exact, that's okay. I support that.
Okay. Then we will, uh, when we're crafting the next agenda, uh, we'll take that into consideration as we move forward from there.
Okay. No, no issues with the changes for this evening.
Okay. Now, any objections? Then we'll move forward with the agenda with the additional item of public, uh, comment. For the additional period of public comment, folks have already submitted cards, so you, this is, um, but it is to just make sure it's right on our agenda. So, uh, we will continue to take cards for public comment. Until the final speaker has concluded their remarks. I do understand we have two, uh, folks who have tuned in via Zoom. Okay, so, um, we will ta- first, uh, we will go to Annie Markarian, followed by Lisa.
Just so you know, uh, Lisa's not going to be speaking, but I might use.
But so we need to, unfortunately, we don't have that process here where we're allowed to get off time. So you're limited to five minutes. She can speak five minutes. Each person is limited to five minutes.
You let the other lady do it last, last week.
Correct, with unanimous consent of the board.
Can we see if the.
As this item is not on the agenda, I will ask that you come back at the time when we do. So this time you do not have unanimous consent of the board.
Well, good evening, board members. Annie Markarian, 30-year Burbank president, supporter of affordable housing and fundamentally opposed to the development of high-density housing at Horace Mann. I've provided each of you with a packet. On the front of the packet are seven questions that arose after last week's meeting. We believe that answers to these questions are necessary in order to meaningfully participate in the study session that you're scheduling. The questions are, please provide additional information regarding the study session. When will it be? Is it an interactive process? Is it part of a regular recorded public meeting? What is it expected to cover and what is it expected to accomplish? When will the mailing list pertaining to Horace Mann's site be available? Um, I think that just became available yesterday, so I can circulate that information. Um, it's unclear from Perkins Eastman's scope of work whether they are assessing two separate parcels or a single parcel. So how large is the site being assessed? And does the assessed site include the location where the current educational structures are located? Have any of the BUSD bargaining units requested to meet and confer over workforce housing? This question is, have you run a report on commute times for BUSD staff? How many or what percentage of BUSD employees live outside of LA County? Brett, uh, Board President Ferguson expressed a vision for universal childcare at Horace Mann. Is there a separate assessment being conducted for universal childcare there? If so, where can we find those documents? Has USC ever attempted universal childcare at the existing facility? You also referenced board, uh, you also referenced that any housing development would require board financing, um, bond financing. Would that require voter approval? And one more question that's not on this list. You had mentioned during the June 1 Board of Education meeting that there were two additional properties being assessed under AB 295. Which are, which properties are though, are those? And where can we find those assessment documents? We would appreciate a response, um, entering into the study session so that we can meaningfully participate. Uh, we also want to thank the board for establishing a communication portal regarding Horace Mann. I will communicate it to the neighbors to encourage them to sign up. That said, the commitment to communicate now after the contract is already approved falls short. Certainly does not put you in compliance with the Brown Act. The appropriate way to be in compliance now would be to rescind the action the board took on June 1st, item 12O. Re-agendize it appropriately and revote. Um, I've provided Vice President Weisberg a treatise on the Brown Act. It has a whole chapter on appropriately agendizing those items. Board member Aragakyan, you said something in passing last week, but you probably didn't expect to have a notable impact, but it did. You said that you wouldn't want some kind of a large development, um, next to your house. And the reason this had an impact on me is because if the Horace Mann community doesn't want it, and the Aragakyan community doesn't want it, where is it going to go? It has to go somewhere because this county needs it. So I looked into what other jurisdictions are doing across Southern California. They're strategic in their approach. They don't develop for the sake of developing. If you look at what's happening, in our neighboring jurisdictions, they're revitalizing communities, building housing around retail space and public transportation, to bring in commerce industry and local hiring. What you're assessing at Horace Mann has no vision, no strategy, and no economic opportunity tied to it. And for that reason, as well as the many that you heard last week, it's not the right place for the project of this type. You also said that you wanted to collaborate with the community on ideas of what to do at the Horace Mann site, and we genuinely believe you. In the last week that you said that, my inbox has been flooded with ideas. Just imagine if you had done that outreach yourself, what kind of feedback you would have gotten. That's not what you guys did. What you guys did was just go straight to a housing assessment. So again, I urge you to reevaluate, to rescind this assessment of, of housing at Horace Mann and start at the community level. Finally, you guys keep saying that the community is circulating misinformation. You haven't identified what is inaccurate. So we want to share with you how we came to the information that we're basing our opinions and thoughts on, so that we can enter into this study session with appropriate framework. I've attached our fact sheet behind tab one in the packets that you have. Every single representation there has statutory support. In tab two, I've added code section 65914.7. Thus the statute that Perkins Eastman's proposal is based on. Behind tab three, I've added code section 65583.2. In the interest of time, I'm going to go through the highlighted sections, but all of the support for assertions and the fact sheet are set forth in those packets. So let's start with tab two, code section 65914.7. It says a housing development project shall be deemed an allowable use on any real property owned by a local educational entity if the housing development satisfies certain enumerated requirements.
Thank you. Your time is concluded. Next speaker is Schlossman. We will review the documents and get you answers. Thank you. Schlossman, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. You know, Ms. Weisberg and Ms. Kamkar, I gotta disagree with you. The folks here are the stakeholders in this community and we want to be heard. And you know, we have children. And when you move to limit our communication with you till late in the evening, you're silencing us. And the appearance of it right now is vindictive. It really is. You know, you're upset because all these folks came down on this Horace Mann project and told you what they were thinking. And it wasn't on the agenda, so you're moving to change it so that can't happen again. Or it'll happen at, you know, 10 o'clock at night or 11 o'clock at night. We all have responsibilities, you know, we've got to cook dinner, laundry, dishes, you know, it just goes on and on. Weisberg wouldn't know anything about it because she doesn't have any children, but that's what you're doing. You can feed your cat at any time of the evening. It's my time.
It is.
So think about that again, what you're doing. It's not funny that the parents with kids who have responsibilities have to help them with their goddamn homework and they can't be there, you know? Okay. Item 5F on your agenda, Ms. Casao is gonna. You're baiting me. I'm not going to fall for it. Ms. Casao is going to give you a, a report and they're going to ask you to certify a self-review to determine if you guys have met, not met, or not met for two years, each local indicator. And I, when I look at the results of this thing, it breaks my heart. When six, seventh, and eighth graders are in the 31st percentile of passing. You know, I don't know what y'all are going to do tonight. Hasn't happened yet, but I urge you to put this off. You haven't met it. And you'll tell me, oh, well, we had COVID, you know, we had a lot of distractions. And we're looking for leaders here. I want you to stick your head out the window and scream, I'm mad as hell and I'm not going to take it anymore. You know, we want more for our kids. It's not business as usual. We're looking for new leadership. Mr. Over the Hill, I'm glad he's gone. Let's make this a new day. You're incredibly disrespectful to be laughing at what I'm saying. I mean, what's that all about? Laughing at a speaker? Making faces? It's very immature. It's time for change around here. Things, and you're making my job very easy because I keep a list in my mind of all this crazy stuff that you do. Do you expect to get anything done? Do you, you expect to pass a bond or a parcel tax? It's not going to happen with this dysfunction. You know, making fun of speakers? Just when I think I've seen it all, I haven't. At each meeting, you surprise me with your antics. What have I said that's so funny? I'm talking about letting parents speak. You know, and not putting it off to the evening, and I'm talking about 5F on your agenda and you're making faces and giggling and laughing. I mean, you're the one who should be go, should be gone. You should join Mr. Hill, resign. You know? Ms. Kamkar, you came here to make change. Obviously you ran for something. Do something. How about you show some leadership? You're 20% of this. The fact that Ferguson is the president means nothing. It's ceremonial. Let's have some leadership from you. I want to know what you think on this thing, on this 5F on your agenda. And don't be so quick to second anything Ms. Weisberg says, you know? I, I want to respect your opinion. I want to hear your voice and I want to hear your leadership and I haven't heard it so far. I heard, I heard a rubber stamp hitting.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else like to address the board? Welcome, board. Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so to pick up where Annie left off, we are looking to be able to enter the study session with an appropriate framework. She's attached fact sheet behind ta- tab one. Every single represent, representation, her statutory support. In tab two, I've added code section 65914.7. That's the statute the Perkins Eastman proposal is based on. And behind tab three, I've added code section 65583.2. In the interest of time, I'm going to go through the highlights, but all of the support for the assertions in the fact sheet are set forth in this packet I've given you. Let's start with tab two, code section 65914.7. It says a housing development project shall be deemed an allowable use of any real property owned by a local educational assess, uh, agency if the housing development satisfies some enumeration requirements. Next highlighted line indicates that at least 30% of the units shall be affordable to low-income households. Next highlighted section references density. It states residential density for the housing development as measured on the development footprint shall, shall be the greater. No discretion here, greater of the allowable on the parcel by the city or the applicable density deemed appropriate to accommodate housing for lower-income households in that jurisdiction. As specified in paragraph three subsection C of section 65583.2. Go to tab three, government code section 65583.2. It lists those appropriate densities. For Burbank as a jurisdiction within a metropolitan county, it's on the bottom of the page, of page three, on top of the page form. States for jurisdictions within a metropolitan county, it would be sites allowable at least 30 units per acre, at least 30 units per acre. If you go back to tab three on the bottom of the page is a height maximum. It specifically says the greater of what the city permits or 35 feet. We recognize this is a maximum and at least in this area. There would be some discretion by the school board. Board of Education, we'd love nothing more than to be wrong. If we are, please educate us. As of now, you haven't provided any substantive fact-based response. If the goal is to advance to universal healthcare, why is a housing evaluation being done? If you're looking at 10 units, how does that address the staffing issues you brought up? If 10 units was just a hypothetical number, what's the real number that's going to make an impact for your needs? If you can't answer these questions, then it's very clear to us that you've entered this contract with insufficient thought and strategic vision. Again, we're asking you to cancel this assessment of housing evaluation at Horace Mann.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Seeing none, we'll close this period of public comment. Have the folks logged in online? If not, okay, uh, going once, going twice. Still haven't, we'll close that period as well. We'll go to staff responses. Dr. Prama.
Yes, sir. Thank you to the two ladies that came to speak about Horace Mann. I will work with, uh, Board President Ferguson and district staff to answer these questions appropriately and in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member responses. Anybody want to jump in? Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Markarian, I have your email flagged. Um, I do, I do absolutely want to continue the conversation. Um, I appreciate this enormously. One of the things that I would encourage or hope that you could do in future is like, these are phenomenal questions. And if you had sent them, we could have probably responded to a large amount of them without there being a delay in time. And I understand that, that there's, there's definitely benefits to coming and speaking at public comment, but you could have, I mean, these questions are really important and I think that Mr. Cantwell and Dr. Prama, we could have responded to them, uh, before tonight. So if other questions come up, I hope you'll consider reaching out before. It doesn't mean you still can't come to public comment, but it does mean we can get you some more information. Um, and you don't have to wait. So, um, the one thing that I will say about, so looking at the fact sheet, it's not, I mean, there's just some, some stuff missing, right? So I, I think that some of it, like the high-density affordable housing, I don't think anywhere in here, and I have not had time to read this comprehensively, talks about it being, uh, for teachers, but, but you bring, both of you, and, and Lisa, thank you for finishing that up, bring up excellent questions that we don't have the answers to because we won't even be able to begin having those conversations until after that's done. So it's not that we're withholding or that we, um, have this sort of secret trove, like you talked about, um, you know, the lack of vision and strategy. You're right. We don't have it yet. Because the, the assessment could come back and it's like, no, this is terrible. Okay, moving on. So we do, you're right. There is not a vision. There's not a strategy. We haven't talked about units. We haven't talked about how many hypothetical teachers that we're thinking about. None of that. You're absolutely right because it's too early to have those conversations. So I, I hear what you're saying. And I think it's important for us to think about if we were to ever do this again, right? How we communicate with the community before we put this in, um, the plan. Hugely important. Hugely important for us. I, I don't think I ever thought about, you know, it's like, well, we're communicating with the BUSD community. And we often don't think, because rarely do we do something that's hyper-specific that would actually impact outside of like the Burbank Unified families. So this is really important for us to know, but I, and I said it before and I'll say it to you again. You're absolutely right. We don't have answers to a lot of these questions because it's too premature. We don't know yet because this is such an early pre-stab. Now, that doesn't negate, again, what you said about, uh, proactive communication. That's an important lesson learned. But I do want to say again, we're not withholding. We truly don't know. And it's not because we have secret plans. We don't have anything because it's too early to have anything. But I would love to, I'll follow up in your email. Maybe we can sit down and continue talking, but Rest assured, I know that we'll all go through this and I really appreciate you taking the time. I know this. I'm sure you have plenty of other things in your day that you could be doing, you know, like feeding a cat or something. Ah, doggy. Um, also wanted to clarify very quickly for, um, the community that's here. The public comment periods are vital to us, but so is doing the business of the district. So we're not restricting communication. We're not shortening time. Most other districts have a three-minute time limit. We're the only district I know that has a five-minute public, and that's because we think it's special, the ability to have a relationship with our stakeholders. So we're not limiting it. What we're trying to do is keep it so that people who are coming to speak on specific agenda items can do that. And that there's still that five-minute period for anybody who wants to speak. Now, there are certain people who do have enough time to come and speak before closed session, first public comment period, second come, and then at the end too. So there are people who have nothing else to do but to come here and do that, but we do take into consideration that people have kids to feed and laundry to fold and animals to feed and all that good stuff. So this is a goal, that, this is an attempt to keep the, um, communication streamlined and also allow for people to come speak on any number of things. So happy to continue that conversation, but, um, just wanted to reiterate that no communication is being limited, no time is being limited. It's just we're going back to the traditional format, which I think is time to do now that we've moved past that sort of, sort of period of COVID where it was an emergency and people really needed to share their feelings about that. So, um, thank you to everybody for coming down, even if you didn't speak, and I hope, I'm just looking at the people in the back. I assume you're here for Horace Mann. So I hope you'll continue to, you know, please reach out to us. We're all available. You have our emails. Um, and again, um, thank you to Annie and to Lisa for your continued investment. It's really impressive.
Thank you. Additional responses.
Thank you. So, uh, thank you for everyone who has come forward to talk about this issue. And I said it last time and I say it again, this is an assessment. And just to give you a little history, I have blueprints of Americana when I was a Parks and Rec sharing Glendale and a chamber president. And when that project came up, there was community talk and assessment and housing was a concern. And and even back then, what I heard was, from one of the developer was, once we build this, a lot of people from Burbank will be living in Glendale because housing is a big concern in Burbank. It's not a new issue. But I think bringing this information former, forward is great, but I can tell you right now, I'm not talking about housing in that area. It's an assessment. We need to look at the properties we own. I'm more concerned also about open space. You know? I, I put this forward a long time ago and people didn't listen to me, uh, where IKEA is right now, the old IKEA. You want to bring density in those areas like Glendale has? Great. Let's talk to the city partners. The mall, you know, there was this idea of turning into a housing with a central park in there. You know, because we do need also open space. So I want to assure you, at least this member, I'm not talking about housing. I'm not, I'm talking about the assessment of our properties to see what's the best we can do. I personally always favor more of open space. And I think also that also adds value to properties, but, but there are a lot of our areas in Burbank that we can have these conversations as well. So I know that some of you are concerned. I will, I am too. If I was a homeowner and, which I am, and this project was being addressed as an assessment, we're not building anything. I want to tell you right now. And I do appreciate this information. And I do appreciate this information. But we should have a conversation about affordable housing, but housing period in Burbank and also open space within that conversation as well. Again, one of the reasons people like moving to Burbank is the fact that still has that small town feeling. And I'm very happy because when my friends come over, their children can go and play in the street without worrying about run over by traffic. And I value that about Burbank, and that's one of the reasons people want to live here. At the same time, we need to have a conversation about how we can have smart development in Burbank. Bringing in open space, bringing in affordable housing, but also making sure that everyone's voice is heard. I do appreciate the information you're giving us. But I can tell you right now, there is any kind of a notion out there, but this is a done deal and we're going to build this and they're coming. I want to be assure you that this member, I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at the information right now. And, you know, I appreciate you coming forward, this is what democracy is about. And we will appreciate your feedback, but at the same time, I want to make sure you understand that sometimes, you know, misinformation can you know, take away productive conversations, but improving the city for our children and families. And talking about things that we can do, because it is a concern of mine also when it comes to attrition of um, you know, students when housing is not, you know, provided. So I think we still have a lot of other areas we can look at, but I think this conversation is something that I also want to talk to the city about. How can we all work together and make Burbank not only more beautiful, but also for generations to come? This is a, a well-kept jewel because our neighboring cities have developed out of control, I get. So been doing this and been part of this for a long, long time. And remember in Glendale, this one, this project, I mean, it kind of went on a ballot, people voted for it. So I don't want us to get to that point, but I want to assure you again, we're here. We're just assessing, just like any landowner assesses their property to see what's feasible and what's not feasible. But I also understand your concerns, I just don't see a development in that area personally, I just don't see, I'm sorry. Doesn't work for me personally. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, any other? Great, thank you very much for this, I appreciate the information and absolutely happy to get uh, answers to these questions because I think they are more than reasonable. Um, and even if they weren't, we would go in forward and answer them because why? That's our job. So um, thank you for this and thank you for approaching it with that, with that um, in mind. Um, the feasibility study is really looking at all facilities, what they need, all properties, what they need, et cetera. So Horace Mann falls into that. Um, obviously one time, at one time, Horace Mann was an active elementary school. Um, it is no longer. Um, right now there are childcare programs that are running out of there, special ed program, I believe still. Uh, so it's limit, its use is very limited uh, in that regard. So again, I, I think everybody's always thinking about how do we take what the taxpayers have already paid for uh, and, and use it to the benefit of this community. Uh, I think we've heard very clearly from the community, very serious concerns about the volume of traffic in the neighborhood, about how that could be augmented and really blown up by um, by the addition of any kind of use frankly up there. Um, I, I, I think also though, the rest of the community also is saying yes, but what's an empty facility doing? Um, that we then have to maintain, that we then have to put a roof over, and yes, that we do have to go for bond approval to spend money to keep that facility up to date so we can use it. Um, I think the other thing we don't want is a rundown facility there either. So this, the Horace Mann was built when? Nineteen thirties? Somewhere in that? Forties, so somewhere in that, so it's been a neighbor a long time before many of the people have been neighbors. Um, and, and that's the challenge here. Um, we absolutely need a solution to, and again, if we have the funding to do it, because that's the reality is that, you know, I never introduced this concept uh, as a means to blow up that neighborhood in any way, shape or form. The, the Hillside community, it has been an integral part of my life and I respect that. Um, having said that, uh, and, and ten, yes, was a number I threw out, but what is feasible at that site? Because a vacant property, running up our bills, running up the taxpayers' bills for bond measures and things like that, um, I don't think is a good use of our taxpayer funds. Uh, and, and I want to make sure that whatever we do with that property, um, whether that is to program it with appropriate childcare, you name it, child development programming, potentially, you know, I'm, I threw out an idea of housing and now everybody's, you know, something, something. Um, does that have huge impacts on the neighborhood? Hope not. How do we design it so it doesn't? But for it to sit half vacant, growing weeds and, and requiring extra maintenance of the district, that is not fiscally responsible either. So I want to, I am always committed to working with neighborhoods on this, I don't think that any solution forward, any way forward uh, doesn't involve neighborhoods. What this was is what can we do? What is the option before we turn to our community partners, not out of fear, but instead say, this is what we can do. This is what we can't do. This is what's feasible, this is what's possible. So if somebody said, well, why don't you just actually take that school down and why don't you do this? Well, we can't legally do that, we got, we have to do X, Y, or Z with it, right? So we could provide a full menu of options to this community. Um, that's accountability, that's doing our homework. Um, but nevertheless, we're here and we're communicating. We haven't shied away from communicating, we created the email list as a means to say, hey, get on this so we can keep you informed. Um, so I really appreciate you helping to disseminate that information out into the neighborhood so that folks can uh, so folks can sign up. Um, is there a link on the website or is there, great, fantastic. So you can go to BurbankUSD.org uh, and, and sign up for the emails there, email updates. Um, we also, I also asked for an item to be brought back at our next agenda uh, that would require thirty day notice of any kind of vote or anything, you know, impacting Horace Mann uh, that would impact the neighborhood. So we would give thirty day notice to that neighborhood as well. So again, we're going out of our way to communicate, there's not a ton to hide here, we see questions, we say thank you. Um, so want you to know that. Um, and, and again, our, our teachers, have they bargained for this, have they negotiated this? No, but they have been up at our podium, if you've seen it, the last like, probably six months prior to this becoming an issue, talking about how hard it is to live here, to afford to be here, the commute times that they have. And it is my responsibility as one member of five, uh, as it is all of our responsibilities, to think about how we can be the best recruiters, the best employers possible and recruit within our means uh, to make the best talent attracted to work here. It can't be just about, um, well, Burbank's got a great name and reputation. You know why we have a great name and reputation? Because there's been smart people sitting at these diances throughout our history, making wise investments, innovative and take innovative choices and making chances, uh, taking chances on things that are, are values-driven uh, work. Um, this work potentially paying for universal childcare access, not, not healthcare. I, I, I don't think we could do that, um, but universal childcare access, that's huge to me also. Uh, because here's the thing, I don't think any, I think all of our neighborhoods are impacted by schools. In fact, I don't think you can walk in any direction in Burbank for more than a mile and not hit a school. That's how well planned out we are uh, in that way. Um, so schools are everywhere, that's also why we have the number of track, traffic incidents that we have. Kind of horrifying, just truth told. But for us to be, we are a very fam- family-friendly community, but if we could then up our game in that way, if we could then make a new commitment again to young families, that if you come to this community, yes, you pay more, but there is a guaranteed access point for you. There is a guarantee that your, your child will have access to childcare when so many folks are, are really struggling. I know your neighborhood doesn't want to be the barrier to that potential either, because that could change lives for a lot of people too. So we got to work together in this sense. I'm not putting you in that, I, you guys have been here from the start saying, this is not what I want for my neighborhood and I, I go, okay, that's fine, I hear you. Um, we have to acknowledge a few things. One, planning and land use is changing, we talked about it last meeting, you know, SB nine allowing single residence, single-family homes to be divided into two lots. Horrifying, horrifying. So all those things are coming already. What we do need to talk about though is what the future of Horace Mann will be. Um, and, and see what that looks like and we'll see after a study. So with that, we'll get you answers to these questions. Uh, again, both periods of public comment are closed, so we'll move on to the I, uh, next items uh, for consideration. Uh, I will continue with my ceremonial role. Onto item three A.
You.
Thank you so much. Um. In fact, if we could potentially consider as well, just doing a mailing to that neighborhood, if we have access to mailing services, what that would look like in terms of costs, yeah, minding costs, um, if there's a way to get that information out, just saying, hey, we understand this is coming out, I, I think, you know, a lot of folks want us, want to play into the fact that, you know, we're government, we're not going to want to spend money to communicate when, and they can run out and try and create chaos and, you know, we have a lot of very reasonable people here who are coming down kind of concerned about, you know, a multimillion dollar Americana style development going up uh, in the nine one five oh four, and I think, you know, there are people that just kind of like to play on those fears and we're not about it. Um, our kids are facing enough real fears.
Yeah.
Uh, so uh, let's, let's set the example and see what we can do on that front. Um, with that, item three A, report on temporary interfund cash borrowing for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, President Ferguson, board members, colleagues and community. Uh, this is the first of two resolutions that we will be holding a public hearing on shortly and asking for you to adopt. It is to give ourselves flexibility during the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year if uh, need arises for us to uh, uh, resolve short-term cash flow challenges. We don't anticipate these being necessary, so as you will see in the supporting documentation, uh, we do not anticipate a cash flow uh, challenge. We have enough reserves that we're carrying forward next year um, as well as the timing of revenue uh, receipts that are anticipated. Um, however, it's important that these steps, all districts do these steps in June to give themselves the flexibility that if it becomes necessary, we have the ability to take action quickly. So this first item is to allow ourselves to borrow interfund, and so the general fund is the primary fund we discuss here in our board meetings. Um, however, we have a, a series of other uh, distinct funds, um, uh, childcare development, uh, nutrition services. Um, and the largest one is often uh, our facilities funds, and so our bond fund is distinct from developer fees, but each of those um, more frequently carry over balance over a year. And so again, if a need arose where in order to meet payroll because uh, the income tax deadline was extended by six months and uh, the state may be uh, deferring some of its uh, uh, cash dispersments, this gives us the ability to temporarily borrow money from one of those other funds that have cash sitting there um, to meet our obligations. Uh, again, this is a, a pro forma standard uh, process that districts undertake in June to give the ability to take action if it becomes necessary.
Questions on this item?
Yeah, just um, it's, I get that this is something that we do every year anyway, but there's context. Um, so would we be informed if and when this was going to happen, uh, given, I, I'm trying to like, understand the um, the because I see the public hearing is required to be held before the governing board adopts the resolution, but not, obviously not before the transfers are made because that's the point of the resolution. Um, so can we just agree that we, you would let us know?
Certainly.
This for going to happen?
Uh, we uh, can certainly ensure that there'd be a, a board agenda item to alert both the board and the community if, if that need arose.
Thank you.
What period of time would you anticipate this being most necessary or?
Yeah, so typically it's the end of the calendar year is when we are uh, most fiscally constrained. So um, there is a property tax payment, uh, the two payments uh, come in December or in April, I believe. And so right as you approach that December property tax disbursement is where districts typically have their, their greatest financial constraint. So if you actually see the materials, November is where we anticipate cash being lowest, but we still will have uh, multiple million dollars on hand.
Any further questions? Um. We will then move to item three B, if you're ready to go on that front. Item three B, which is the report on excess reserves.
And we discussed this one last week, but as a reminder, uh, we anticipate ending um, this fiscal year with approximately thirty-six million dollars in our unrestricted ending fund balance. Um, and so as a um, a component of that, we are required to bring forward um, this information to acknowledge that we are ending in excess of the ten percent reserve cap. Um, state of California requires that school districts of our size maintain at least a three percent reserve and it caps it at ten percent. Um, if you go beyond ten percent, you, uh, there's a, a number of, of um, things which occur, but those can be avoided by identifying appropriately what the intent is for the, the use of those funds. In our case, the reason that we have these funds are because we have a um, a compensation increase that's been agreed to at our last board meeting for um, a raise to BTA because we had paid none of it in this past fiscal, in this uh, this fiscal year that's about to end. Um, we will be paying the entirety of that amount next fiscal year, and so we will be drawing down those reserves significantly once that payment is made.
So just to clarify, because I think this question has come up quite a bit, um, and I appreciated the information that you guys compiled that sort of gave a, a simpler overview, but um, a lot of people are saying, well, this is great, we have all this money. Why are we even worried about money anymore? So I think that answers part of the question, which is that paying the, the well-deserved raise will take down the reserve. Could you talk a little bit more about why this isn't a sort of windfall that solves our issues in the next couple of years?
Certainly, so I hope to be able to discuss that also when we uh, do our second reading of the budget adoption, but I'm.
For that, yeah, just wait, we'll talk about it then.
Okay.
I don't want to make you repeat the same thing seven.
Well, I will give the information whenever you think it's most helpful.
If you're, if the plan was to talk about it during the ORU, I think that's the perfect place for it.
Thank you.
Thanks. So where would the um, the raise show up in here? Is that just under the expense for twenty-three, twenty-four or?
In the actual.
It's not committed funds, or they're not, it's not listed out separately as a fund, right? I'm looking at the board report.
No, you're looking at the correct one. Um. It'd be the fiscal stability assignment.
Got it.
And that actually is probably a good future presentation.
Hmm.
Put that together for us.
Absolutely.
Um, just highlighting all the loveliness that are these dense uh, volumes. Uh, I remember as a student board member getting uh, the unaudited actials and it came in basically a football. Um, so um, and obviously there are now PDFs and that's lovely, but uh, that would be, I think, an important presentation for board education overall.
Excellent.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, then we will move to item three C on the agenda, which are a, a report on authorizing temporary transfers from school pools fund uh, maintained by the uh, Los Angeles County Treasurer's Office.
So this is that second resolution I was mentioning, uh, two of two tonight to give ourselves again another option. If we did not have the funds that were needed within um, alternative uh, internal funds, then the next place for us to, uh, the other place for us to pursue that we'd need authorization for is working with the, the county treasurer. Um, again, this is not something that is anticipated, uh, but it's a, a necessary step that districts undertake to give the ability to, you know, if there is a deferral, which we, we are hearing the possibility of that with this upcoming uh, budget adoption from the state. If we do start running into um, delays in the timing that the state gives us revenue, that may be necessary for us to uh, meet short-term um, uh, cash flow needs by these uh, these loan uh, tools. So this is the, the other, another source that we were able to utilize to meet uh, cash flow uh, issues.
Questions on this item?
Yeah, I think um, related, but not about the actual borrowing is just, it would be good to see essentially what you were talking about before of like, what times in the year things do get tight. So like having a day's cash on hand projection over the course of the year um, would be super helpful.
Excellent.
Um, and yes, if we could also potentially reach out to the bargaining units to see if they have any questions related to our kind of, you know, transparency related to our finances, you name it, um, so that way we can really. So that way we can really truly make this a community source, also our PTA council and our, basically our stakeholder groups, our foundation group as well. If there's any questions about how we display, how we, you know, or if there would be a better format for how we, we obviously are legally bound to report and to, to monitor and track in certain ways, that's fine. But if there are more user-friendly formats that would give people a clearer picture, I think that that's important. Especially now.
Context is important.
Context is important. Okay, any further discussion on these items? Okay, seeing none. It is time for the public hearing, except it is not time for the public hearing. So we have a little bit of time before then. I'm looking at, at 7:30 is when the public hearing is scheduled for. So we've got about 39 minutes of fabulous fun time. And just to focus on some of the other potential items, I'm seeing obviously the second reading of the LCAP. That is not an item that we require a second public hearing on, correct?
Correct.
Right, because we held the public hearing last time. Do we have a report for that or are we just?
We can't move anything else up?
No, because, well, the temporary interfund is a part of the public hearing.
Okay.
Required by the public hearing and resolution 36 as well as.
And 37?
37 would be fiscal solvency plan, but I think it would probably be.
We can do that.
Okay.
I, if we have the time.
If we, absolutely.
Legal, you should do it. Okay.
Would board members be comfortable moving to item 37? Or I'm sorry.
Five C?
Yeah, sorry, five C, resolution 37, five C. So I wasn't completely disconnected. Thank you. Thankfully, again, this rule is ceremonial, so nobody would worry. And Dr. Weisberg could take over in two seconds, so. Oh, the cats.
He has responsibilities too.
Right, okay, well. Thank you. Move to item five C, adoption of resolution 37 for the approval of the development of a fiscal stabilization plan. I can't well.
Yes, so we are required to submit a fiscal stabilization, stabilization plan to the county. Whenever there is a concern that we would not be able to meet our three-year fiscal obligations. So school districts can't technically bankrupt, but they can go insolvent by not being able to meet those three-year projections. That's why each time we do bring to you a review of our proposed budget, as we will tonight, or the interim revisions as we do in December and March, we look at a multi-year projection. We look at a three-year time horizon at all times. And if we have concerns that we're going to have to make reductions in expenditures in order to meet our obligations during that three-year span, then we're required to have a fiscal stabilization plan as a component. And so Dr. Weisberg, to your comments a few moments ago, we have a budget right now that requires $6 million in expenditure reductions in the third year. And so there have been comments at times in the past where that may need to be staffing reductions. We don't know that yet. That's what you would be tasking me with through this resolution to work with our district staff to bring forward at the first interim revision, again, that'd be in December, a plan for how we would ensure that we can meet our ongoing financial obligations. And so again, this is a necessary component because even with the additional funds that we discussed last week, we require $6 million in expenditure reductions in year three in order to meet our financial obligations.
And before we, before we corrected the budget, what would have been the amount we had to cut three years out? Do, do you, I don't even remember what it is.
So, well, the reason that it's difficult to, to recall is because it changes nearly daily. And so the number began at eight million and then it quickly turned to 13 million when the governor released his May, May revise to the budget. And so we were in that 13 to 15 million dollar range. And so that's been reduced by about the same amount, that 8.7 million dollars connected to the accrual is why we're now down to about 6 million.
Thank you.
There's no questions on this item?
So December, we'll see.
December is when we bring to you approval of a fiscal stabilization plan, which then goes forwarded to the county.
And by that time, hopefully, obviously what reviews we will be putting in place will be wrapped by that moment. So that as well, I think will bolster things a bit more.
And President Ferguson, if I may, just, I know, again, we have our partners with BTA here in the audience. And as we heard mentioned in public comments in the past, this is not the first time that the district is projecting a deficit in the third year that would warrant expenditure reductions. Oftentimes this does not come to fruition because we have increased revenue that comes just from the state. Again, think about this past year as an example. No one knew 15 months ago, the amount of one-time funding that would come to the district in the form of two block grants that we received at the end of June. Think about a few years before that and the amount of funding that came through COVID. And so districts use the best information they have at the time that they're adopting their budget and each of the interim revisions. But for a variety of factors, what we see as potential reductions that need to be made in the third year often are not actually required. And so this is a plan that we've had to produce in the past on a number of occasions. This is again, a necessary step for fiscal oversight and appropriate responsibility. But it's not that we are right now saying, stating with certainty that we actually expect to need to make the $6 million of cuts.
So just so I understand logistically, are you basically going to put together a plan for $6 million, even if that number changes over time? In terms of like what your third year projection is for the deficit or how flexible do you need to be on that?
It's a great question. So it will be based on the required expenditure reductions at first interim.
Okay.
And this can become a dynamic document that at the interim revisions is updated. And so at second interim, if we have, again, new information that would suggest that the reduction has changed, then that would be updated at those revisions.
Okay, but at first interim, we should expect a plan for 6 million? Or that number could change?
That number may change.
Got it. Cool. Thanks.
We will ensure, again, the fiscal health and solvency of the district by properly identifying what reductions need to occur to meet our obligations.
I'm just always tie numbers out.
And this also reminds you, state legislature doesn't decide budgets in threes. They decide budgets in one year at a time. And as a result of those decisions that are made one year at a time, they are then making us do the decision-making for three years at a time. So that's going to be a common recurrence that the third year out is going to be rather apocalyptic in nature. Having said, unless we're in great booming economic times and we have no worries, that is not our moment right now. Many worries, many doubts. So anyway, so we're going to continue to work with our bargaining partners. We appreciate them for being here and we'll, we'll continue to work on this. So with that, any other item, any other comments on this? Now that I'll take a motion.
For President Ferguson. I move that we adopt resolution 37 for approving the development of fiscal stabilization, easy for us to say, plan as presented.
By Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Agathonian. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries for zero. Onto item five D, which is the second reading of the 2324 Birmingham Unified School District Local Control Funding Formula and Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP.
And that's five D, correct? For people following you.
Five D, yes, thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
Nope.
If we could preview again, just because this is a specially noticed meeting, just because it is the budget, this is the end of a three-year plan, right? So what, what does, can we preview what the next? You've done it already so far in little breadcrumbs. I'm asking you to do it again. Just because it's going to be.
Yeah, I always, I always suspect that, but now I'm. I don't know if it's.
Good one, that one. There is. Plan LCAP. That kind of far. I think that's a great idea. As our development plan. Here it becomes really critical. So I think that in some ways. But there are some stakeholders.
That's. Okay.
Why?
I, oh, I will.
Check one, two. That's the. Speaker mic. My band rec goes. Alabama. A. L. A. B. C. Hello. I. Good. Good. Check. Microphone test. Check one, two. That's the microphone. Confirming audio. What? Seven, five. I. I. Okay. It's a. Talk. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, good. To be. I did. That. Hmm.
Wow.
Such. Time. Up. Uh. So. I don't know. Not. So. Uh. I'm here. But. Um. With the. For. Not. For. Or. Uh. From. Can't see. Uh. Uh. In other ways. Some. I brought. Pretty. So. Great. But that. Uh. It. And so. Uh. We. Did. Did not go on. Um. If you want. To. Perfection. That's. The. Five.
President. Ferguson. Our. What? Um. I'm. You approved the second meeting. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. For being. By school. Is. On. On line. Group plan.
Right. Good. Right. After. But. Stop. That's up. But. Express. I. Do. So. I. It. Like. You. Up. Thank you. But.
Create our own assessments to measure our performance.
School environment, running around 24, you know, on the big side, obviously, on the smaller end, still a few hundred. That's a lot. And I certainly remember not having the I can't today days. So those are, those are skill sets too. It's not just the germs and the masks, right? You know, so I, I think that's also.
There's another, another piece of data that we can look at, which is our suspension data, which has not quite doubled, but has increased significantly over this last year. And I think all of those things are part of the conversation.
I, I couldn't agree more. I just think that we can hypothesize about this all we want, but trying, trying to get to the bottom of it. And I think there's no way to do that without consistent communication with our teachers. We also know that issues with families or our parents are impacting our teachers enormously. And so one of the things I know, Dr. Pramo, that you want to focus on is making sure that we reiterate code of conduct with adults the same way that we do with our kiddos, because teachers should not have to be educating and, you know, having, we can all be respectful and disagree. We can respect that parents want to do what's best for their kids, but also teachers want to do what's best for their kids. So just making sure we create an environment too, that's mentally healthy and supportive for our staff. That only trickles down to our kiddos anyway.
And, you know, I, I couldn't agree more with that, right? I mean, students are watching this board meeting and they see how people, how adults act, right? And then they go to the classroom and they say, it's my first amendment right to tell you this, to tell you that. So, you know, and, and I've heard that from multiple teachers, that, that what is demonstrated, right? In the name of free speech or in the name of, we have to realize that, that there's always been a civility factor in, in some of this. Not towards all people, but to people generally charged with coexisting in a society. You know, when, when folks have been discounted, no, obviously those folks have never been treated with civility and dignity. But that's always been a component of, of any society that has declared itself to be one. And, and so that's the fascinating factor that I think people forget. But I, I think that comes, I want to explore ways to actually mark that data in what ways we can, to identify those data, those data points. I don't want to give kids excuses to just say, today's not my day. But I think especially for those, you know, I heard over the weekend, I was having a conversation with a group of folks and somebody said, you know, mental health is a new bullying. And I just wanted to like, you know, just kind of like set the record straight in so many blunt terms. Having said that, I think it's interesting that people perceive that. I, and I do think that we are still in a culture of sorts that feels that the, the disclosure of a mental health challenge or struggle is the equivalent of one, you know, making an assessment about a parenting style. It's making an assessment about overall health, about wellness, about a number of things. Like you can't be struggling with depression and be a, a human of value in this world anymore. And, and I just, you know, we, we, everybody in this room, at least I hope, really does believe that. That, that, that some of the most depressed people in the world who have really struggled have been, you know, brilliant leaders in the history and especially in the course of our history. There's a great book, Lincoln's Melancholy, that, that speaks to the depth of his depression that he struggled with, likely clinical based off of what everybody can assess from there. Didn't have the tools then that we do now. Having said that, I think that it is okay, or I don't, I don't want students missing class. I think the best place they, they can be is in the classroom, working with educators that are engaged. And as you can see, despite all of our cuts, these are the numbers we're still producing. Thanks to our teachers, thanks to our support staff, thanks to hardworking administrators who are planning smarter, being more efficient and keeping these classrooms up and running. Cause I'm telling you, the, the numbers don't match on this. It, it has to be human innovation. It has to be human driving and just genuine care and investment. But for those kids who can't, when we have SARB hearings, things like that, right? And we hear it every now and then where we'll get a parent who will come to the board level seeking relief in some way, hey, you know, they've just been depressed. They've just been, it's been too hard. How can we monitor that? How is there a way through policy, again, whether the state authorizes it or not? If it does, if there's any window, any margin by which we could explore that, where somebody could declare a mental health day of sorts and be absent, you know, and, and that'd be okay. How, how can we figure that out? Or at a minimum, give students the ability to register that so that way there are no punitive actions on the district's end. We're going to lose the funding for that day.
We'll change it.
Right? But can a student, can students be granted a certain number of days in a calendar year, in a school year? Where they, where they get to turn in assignments, you know, they, if, if they're being honest about it, you know, and just, I don't know, something to that effect, but I do want to safety net in that regard, or just some sort of assessment.
Didn't we talk about, I could be completely wrong, about like mental health days as excused absences?
It was a piece of legislation that was, I think, moving through last legislative session.
We were going to add it to the slip, you know, where you check off like, we had a student come and advocate for that.
That's right.
I just don't know what happened. So it would be interesting to follow up to, to see, at the very least, to not make it punitive, right? So if a parent calls and says, hey, my kid needs a day, great. You know, because we can't really police, if a parent says, my child is not coming to school.
Or, or a doctor's note.
Or a doctor's note, sure.
I mean, if we're dealing with depression, that's a medical condition and if the student is out for X amount of days and there is a doctor's note because of an illness, then those would be.
And, and, but further, if there is not a doctor's note, then at what point is a conversation surrounding potentially an IEP being deployed? At what point, you know, what are those trigger points when, when other filters kind of started indicating there's an issue? Just want to campfire real quick.
That's my last. Cool, thank you. And I think the, the attendance discussion is interesting, right? Cause it's very much a chicken or, or an egg kind of situation, right? Are the, are the scores the way they are because kids are not in school or kids not in school? They're not engaged in learning and they don't want to be there. You know, I was looking at this data and kind of trying to crosswalk it with some of the data that's in the LCAP as well. So, you know, I'm fairly familiar with iReady as an assessment. I'm curious, you know, I see that from last year, it's either down or flat across the board, right? So if we kind of know what's going on there, I also know that iReady puts out essentially like targets for students, right? In terms of the growth that we expect them to see in a year and knowing like how many students have hit their growth goals. I think would be helpful for, for me at least, to understand what this means, right? which is still significantly higher than a lot of other places. But I don't imagine that it makes people feel great either who are, like I taught a standardized test course. I understand how that feels. And so I would love to have kind of the click in, and I think maybe we're going to talk about this in our academic committee. And so I think that would be great. I also was curious on the, on the CASP data, so the state testing. You've got kind of the individual preliminary results in the LCAP. There's an aggregate. I get that they're preliminary results. It looks to me like if I compare them, like, you know, last year it was 59% overall for ELA and ELA was, or elementary was 60, middle school was 54, high school was 65. My guess is that that's flat to up. Middle math looks like it's maybe flat to up. But like, do you have a sense of that as well? That was like no questions and I'll just, the last one was a question.
I hesitate, I hesitate to respond to it yet because they are preliminary and they haven't reported 100% of the results. And then also that they will do disaggregation by subgroups and that sort of thing. Once 100% of the scores have been reported, and I believe we received that last year around late September, October. This year we received the individual student scores about a month earlier than we did last year. So I'm hoping that timetable moves up as well for that. But you asked me what my sense was, and I would say that my sense is that these preliminaries are, results may be even a little higher than what the state's going to report. So I would, I would say that we are probably sustaining or flat with growth in most areas. And, and maybe a little below where we were last year in some grade levels, especially in early grade levels. This seemed to, seems to have impacted our, our third grade students who tested for the first time. But also those were the students that lost that in-person class time and kinder in first grade when it's really vital.
Oh, my question about kind of the assessment overall of the local indicators. The, just to clarify, the, the state testing, the CASP data is captured separately on the dashboard, right? Like that's, is that part of our local indicators met, not met, or is it included in there?
It's, it's not. So that's one of the, that's one of the items in the dashboard that the state collects and reports out on. And we report out on just the local ones aside from that.
And so is IREDDI considered a local one?
IREDDI is a local, is part of our local assessments, so it's included in our local indicators. And IREDDI is actually one of the state suggested assessments to, to use for that purpose.
One more, last one, I promise. Sorry. I'm not sorry. I'm trying not to apologize. In the support for teachers and administrators, and this is, this was the same question I had in LCAP as well, but. So when we're talking about English learners and there's this large influx of our Ukrainian students coming into the USD, and I feel like that is presents a different challenge than it might be just for students for whom English isn't their first language. And I wonder what we're doing, and this is, I don't know who, to whom I should direct this. But, you know, what kind of trauma-informed professional development? How, because I, I just think that it requires a different skillset than a sort of standard English language learner classroom. And so I wonder what we're doing to sort of address this new need from a translation standpoint, just from helping students who are coming from war-torn country cope being in a completely new place.
I'll let Dr. Pramo jump in on that. Just as far as the reporting in here, I did want to point out that there were some items listed on our district PD calendar, specifically the GLAD trainings. But it's listed once, but those were over multiple days. So I don't want it to be a false representation of the work. It was a one-day training. It was, it was a series of days with different cohorts.
We offer really robust professional development. I just wonder, and I know this is something that has been thought about.
So what I will say is that if you look at our data, we have seen a very large influx of newcomers over the last couple of years. I think that's pretty obvious. And we have talked, we've talked with, at, at a recent professional development with our math cohort that's been working with the Math Collaborative, talked about the need at some specific sites who have the greatest amount of newcomers, the extra assistance they need in order for those students to acclimate, feel comfortable and transition well. And we've talked about the possibility of having a liaison. Position and trying to leverage LCAP funds. So those, those are discussions that we've been having. Those are discussions that we need to move forward. In particular with the, this coming year being a, a year to design a new LCAP plan. I think that those have to be part of the discussions that we're really looking at. I, I just also wanted to say that. Even without the obstacle of like COVID, this work is really hard.
So hard.
You're trying to align a local assessment with a state assessment to make sure that they match. And our teachers are really good at that. They really are. But you're also then looking at sample item questions to figure out if what, the way you ask that question is really getting you the information that you want. And we've had these math tests that we just recreated this year. So there's a lot of work to do with that. You gotta go back and look at those tests and look to see what is, are we asking the question incorrectly? Is there a better way to ask the question? And let's review that by looking at item selections and figuring out which are the ones that kids miss the most and why. If the question was, is constructed correctly, then it's a matter of how are we teaching it? What is the process for doing that? And that takes a lot of work and it takes, and that's work that happens over time. And so with the recreation of some new assessments, that's the process that we're going to have to go through. Our, keep in mind, and, and some of our subject areas, for example, in science, we had a two-year adoption. So they haven't had a NGSS-aligned textbook that we just approved and we're going to get for this coming year. And social studies has only been implemented for a year now. So we still need to go through the process of looking at all, at all of that and getting our teachers together to be able to do that work.
I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, it's not about, I don't feel like we're in a position, no one should feel like they have to do these results, right? Our teachers are doing extraordinary work.
They are.
Extraordinary circumstances. And so I think, why I wanted to talk a little bit in the beginning about all the different factors that we know feed into testing scores. So I think it's really hopeful and in some places it's super positive. And I think we're in a really, a pretty exciting place. I think as we get further away from those years that our kids lost in the classroom, it's going to be interesting to see sort of what happens, what obstacles go away, what new ones appear. But this, I really appreciate the thoroughness and also the clarity of this. It helped me break 12,000 question stats.
There's one data point for us. We look at grades and a lot of other things, the whole child. But it's a critical one that we want to really pay attention to.
Piggybacking on that a little bit, we also can start looking, you know, kind of came together as Dr. Weisberg was saying, you know. Six years from now, we'll get the research on, you know, what to do with all this. Having said that, there are young, younglings who were impacted at developmental moments. That are coming into our school system still, right? That we have still two, three years of, of kind of post, of, of real like critical time for brain development that was occurring just at home, that couldn't go outdoors, that had to look at TVs all day, that had monitors. So I, I think it's going to be critical to, to be thinking about this as the future, just as much as the past. I mean, and, and honestly, just as all of this will then eventually impact things like parenting styles, frankly, 20 years from now. I mean, this is, this is crazy, but it's true. Like these are, we, we are not, we don't know yet. So I do think it's important though, where, where we can see data coming in, that as we're talking about LCAP in particular, we're, we're thinking about those as well, because I think what we see now is the tip of this, right? Really, truly, because I think also people are just, we don't have tools for a lot of this anymore. And so a lot of it's going unchecked and as a result, the schools are dealing with the brunt of it. Why? Because your kiddo has to go to school every day. And, and, you know, whatever's there is going to happen, but we are there trying to preserve a safe, equitable learning environment for everybody. And that's sometimes a challenge when a kid is struggling. So I, I just think, I think all good points, really happy with frankly, the conversation around here, not just rubber stamp falling. But certainly something that is, and then Miss Spencer Camp Card has.
I, I had a couple more questions.
Asking questions about academics. Watch out.
I know, watch out. Well, this is actually more about, well, it is. Do we know, I imagine you're going to tell me that we will know this when summer school is over, but do we have an idea of preliminary graduation rates from this last year at all?
We are working on that data. I can tell you by the size of the non-grad class, it's probably going to be pretty good. But we'll definitely get that to you by the end of summer school.
Okay. And expulsions from Lester?
From this current school year?
The one that ended like.
You'd liken me? It's funny because the LCAP's always one year behind.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't want to speak out of hand, so.
I just, I'm curious because it, it might be a typo or not. It just says in 2122, no students were expelled twice. So I wasn't sure if that was true for this last year. And this was something that I did not notice when I was first.
That's the LCAP plan?
Yeah. Page 21.
So, and on that point in particular, I think it's important that we also talk about that at some point. And that should, there is a perception by some educators that we are purposely not expelling or we are purposely not disciplining the means to keep these numbers up. And so I think that that also are, what is the criteria for this? What are we, you know, making sure that that comes back for review and consideration is important. As the board does directly deal with expulsions, obviously.
Yeah, I just think it's a, it's a good kind of school culture metric, right? So in here, we've got expulsions. I know Dr. Pramo and I were talking about suspension data, especially at the middle school level earlier today. And so, you know, we, we can't teach our kids if they're not in school. And if they're not actually engaged in learning, you're right, if they're not engaged in learning with us, that's pretty hard. So, yeah, that's going to be interesting. Thank you.
And as Miss Spencer Camp Card said, who co-chairs the academic committee for us, I, I think these are where these conversations, I think these conversations need to occur. And I, in my conversations with Dr. Pramo as well, you know, where are we focusing academically has been a really big point. And, and we certainly know generally how people are reacting to needs. But where are we building? Where, where is kind of the strategic planning? That doesn't always get the same airtime and I want to make sure that that gets that because I know it has. I know it exists and I know the people who are struggling to do their jobs every day with the limited resources we give them are still doing that. But we need to hear about that so how, so we can supplement.
Great. A few more, we spent a nice amount of time on, on academic and that's great because that's what we.
It's what we do.
We, what we do and we, we're glad to focus on that. But we also need to look at a couple of other priorities or indicators. And those would be family engagement, parent and family engagement. So go through a process of looking at that in a template that they provide for, for looking at that family engagement. And then we declare whether we've met that goal and we, and we have. And this is just some information about what that looks like. And then school climate, that's our school satisfaction survey, the primary driver of, of our findings and information for that. So you can see some of the bullet points there of the overall satisfaction for school sites is at 70%. Teacher perceptions is high, including also staff evaluations, effective communication, families feel welcome on our school sites. There's quite a bit of positivity in there.
Does that data change significantly since the previous year? I saw that there's like a change for PBIS and anti-bullying, but.
Okay. So there at the bottom, most of it stays pretty, stays pretty consistent. Most of it stays consistent. In the next slide, there's a couple of recommendations that came out of it, and those were, were areas where they did see changes. So this kind of answers your question as far as an increase in frequency of, and transparency of communication with parents and staff. So that was a, a place where we saw a slight decline from previous years. So we wanted to investigate that and look at how we can improve there. Investigate this significant shift in post-high school plans for students. So that was a shift that we didn't anticipate, but showed up in the survey results from students. Is that, unless students reported that they were not considering. Those plans are four-year plans, community colleges are, were uncertain. So that's a point of, of investigation for us to, to see, to see why we've seen a decrease in that reporting in that survey this year compared to previous years. And then expand our professional development offerings on behavior management, which I had said earlier, that one of the things that came from our staff was a, a need to focus on how to, to help, help support those students in their classrooms. That was the end of the slides. So in closing, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but we, we will be reporting that we've met all of our local indicators this year. And we've, we've consistently met all of our local indicators for the past quite a few years.
Obviously there are going to be follow-ups on the academic side, I think on the student fair side, you know, as it relates to discipline. I definitely want to see some additional kind of discussions about that. We, you referenced very quickly PBIS as a means of intervention. I want to just pick tires on that, where that's at. It was quite literally work to try and bring those kinds of interventions through the mental health plan. When I started on this journey and it just feels, where is it at? It feels like we're funding it at kind of a drip, drip, but what, what, what impact, what does it look like? How can it be better, either implemented, deployed? Again, where is it and how is it impacting? So follow-ups for academics, follow-ups for student affairs, we'll go from there. In the meantime, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Hey, with that, we will go to, well, we got to prove it. First, status of local indicators is met. Can I get a motion?
Board President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we approve the status of local indicators as met.
Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Ira Kanyan, the doctors. Any further discussion on this item?
I just have one thing, which is, you know, it's one met, not met, not met for two years. There's a lot of pieces in here, right? I think some of the academic pieces that we talked about that aren't necessarily meeting goals, we're going to see elsewhere in the dashboard, right? So I'm fine approving this because there is so much in here that I think the district is really doing well. And there's a lot of places for us to dig in and figure out what's next.
Thank you. And thank you for making that point. I, you know, I, I think it's very, I think one of the greatest challenges with, with academics generally, at least my, my time on the board is, is trying to find where to look to, that, where's that one true north star that kind of illustrates what the academic picture is and the experiences of young people in this town are? And there, there are none. It is a bit of really inference. It's, it's quantitative as well as qualitative data. There are so many different factors. So when the state, of course, comes to you and says, put it on, put it, put it on a document and also we're going to assign a color code to it. First of all, government assigning color codes to anything hasn't been going well throughout the course of human history. If we remember, you know, nine 11, if we remember all of these different, it doesn't do it. But what we do know is that, again, despite years of budget cuts, our schools are delivering. That is factually true. Despite unprecedented anxiety levels being experienced by students, our continues, our students continue to succeed in the classroom. So when you put the headwinds against us and, and really, really calculate what that looks like. I, I think the bottom line is the teachers, everybody who creates the educational community of our schools are delivering for our kids in big ways. Are there ways to improve? I think everybody's got a post-it note somewhere in the back of their mind, ways that they want to do it. That's great. Let's get those into mobilized ideas. But having said that, thank you for the report on this. This is one indicator of many. Don't want to be weaponized frankly, to just say, you know, we're not doing our job here. By one metric, there's always room to grow. So, but again, there are no metrics in this district that say there is no room for growth. So we'll continue to focus on that. And I really want to thank my colleagues who are educators or who work in education, who have a history of this, who clearly are bringing a passion on, on these areas in particular, which frankly gets me engaged and excited in, in new ways about this. That's the benefit of a five-member. That's the benefit of a five-member board is that you have the ability to kind of riff off each other and what makes you passionate and build and grow. So just thank you to Ms. Spencer Camp Car and Dr. Weisberg in particular for your feedback on these. It was helpful to me as a colleague. Okay, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five zero? Four zero, excuse me, four zero, that's right. Sorry, Miss Tabit, you'll see it at the academic committee. Okay. With that, I guess we are going to go back, yeah, we will go back to the public hearing on item four A, which is the public hearing on the temporary, so it's actually a public hearing on two items. On item four A, or yes, on item five A and five B. But it's a public hearing on the temporary interfund cash borrowing resolution for the 2023, 2024 fiscal year. And a public hearing on the temporary transfers from the school pools fund maintained by the Los Angeles County Treasurer for the 2023, 2024 fiscal year. With that, we will open the public hearing. Are there any individuals who wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and proceed to item five A. Adoption of Resolution 35 authorizing temporary interfund cash borrowing for the 23, 24 year. Can I get a motion?
Board President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we adopt Resolution 35 authorizing temporary interfund cash borrowing for 2023, 2024 as presented.
Moved by the doctors. Any further discussion of item five A? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Close, that motion carries five zero. Four zero, I keep saying, you're absolutely right. Sorry, it is habit. Thank you for pointing it out. See, everybody's helping today. Adoption of Resolution 36 authorizing temporary transfers from the school pools fund maintained by the Los Angeles County Treasurers for the 2023, 2024 year.
Board President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we adopt Resolution 36 authorizing temporary transfers from the school pools fund maintained by the Los Angeles County Treasurer for 2023, 2024 as presented.
Moved by the doctors. Any further discussion of item five B? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries four zero. Okay, with that, I want to also just check in again that there are no speakers for public comment for the closed session agenda. Going once, going twice, okay, confirming, so no further public comment. Then with that, I believe we are done with our agenda, our public agenda, and we will adjourn into closed session. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Can we do, close here?
I'd love it, we can just turn the lights off.
No, there are no, I don't believe there will be any reported vote. Oh, wait.